I'll call the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda, I need a approval of the minutes from the February 1st, 2021 meeting. Do I have a motion to accept?
I think a motion to accept minutes.
Have a second?
A second.
Approve.
Aye.
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 Any old or open business?
It's on the agenda tonight.
On new business, we have one item, and that pertains to the revisions, additions to the city of Mount Healthy zoning codes. And I guess to give us an overview of the changes and revisions, I'd like to hear from our code consultant. So if you could give us a brief overview.
Thank you, Don. I'm the Planning Commission, and thank you for having me. My name is John Young. I am the Senior Project Executive for the firm Urban Fast Forward. We are a commercial real estate and urban planning firm based out of Cincinnati, Ohio. And some, I might look familiar to some of you guys. We worked on developing the community plan for Mount Healthy in 2018 called the Healthy Hilltops Plan. And so we've been working in Mount Healthy for the last couple of years, and it's a great community to be working in. We're very happy to be advancing one of the main initiatives coming out of the Healthy Hilltops Plan, which was the zoning code reform. I believe everybody here has a copy of the PowerPoint presentation.
There's extra copies out front, too, if anybody liked them. And they, and just so everybody knows, there is a link on our webpage to both the PowerPoint presentation and the whole document that's 180 pages. We didn't print out a lot of extras of those.
Take my glasses off because they're fogging up. Hopefully that will, actually now I can't see the presentation, so we'll have a, all right. So first page goes over the foundation of the revisions. As I said before, we worked on the Healthy Hilltops Plan in 2018. That was a year-long process. We worked with the neighborhood, excuse me, stakeholder engagement committee and did several stakeholder engagement sessions throughout the community and identified a series of assets, challenges, and opportunities to help develop a way forward for the city of Mount Healthy. One of the core recommendations coming out of the policy section of the Healthy Hilltops Plan is code reform. And a couple of things that we found during our zoning code analysis at the time was that the zoning code needed to be simplified for potential applicants in the city, whether they be developers, or homeowners, or new business owners. The charting of the pathways was a little bit complex and opaque. And so we found that making the zoning code a little more easier to read and simplifying it a bit would encourage development and better protect public assets. Our code reform recommendation included reorganizing the code structure, make it easier to read and navigate, to eliminate or reduce parking requirements, to update the signage regulations, specifically to allow for projecting signage, and to develop regulations to allow more housing diversity within the city, and also to designate the CBD as a historic district, something that will not come out of the code project as of yet, because that is a separate project unto itself. And then also to allow some small-scale agriculture in some of the residential yards across the city. Next page, elements of the current code. So part of our zoning code analysis that we found here. And if this isn't PowerPoint on the screen, I'd have this really cool graphic where if you wanted to find out what was allowed in Zone E, it would just say, "All permitted uses in the D District." So you have to go to the D District, which says, "All permitted uses in the C District", which means you had to go to the B District, which means, says, "All permitted uses in the A District." So what it does is it basically shoots everything back to the A District and then makes modifications from the A District's usage table there on forth. So we went ahead and unpacked all of that in our analysis to figure out exactly what's allowed where. There's also a lack of definitive regulations concerning conditional uses, administrative processes, and other kinds of usage typeologies that are found commonly in other zoning codes. So we began a process with the city to rehabilitate the zoning code and update it for the city of Mount Healthy. The city, when they hired us, had a desire for code reform based on the 2018 plan and the 2007 comprehensive plan. They wanted to make it clearer for users. They wanted to streamline and make more clear the standards for conditional uses. And then if there were additional conditional uses, have some additional regulations for that. They also wanted to address group homes and signage, including the projecting signage that we mentioned earlier. And the graphic on this is the table that we created of all of the zoning usage classifications. And of course, this is only one of eight pages on the Excel spreadsheet, so it's a very big chart that we were working from. We kicked off this process in September of 2019. It was led by city staff. We met with Bill and Gordon and the city manager. And we also developed a local zoning committee led by city stakeholders, including the city manager and Jim Loenberg, Kim Kremmons, Betty Bolis, Dave Osterde, Susan Frank, and Diane Calmeyer. A diverse collection of citizens from different backgrounds, business owners, architects, neighborhood advocates, realtors, and so on and so forth. The committee did include some guest appearances from other citizens who, whose considerations were also factored into with during the zoning recode. So once we reviewed the existing zoning ordinance to figure out where all the pitfalls were, we took all that information. Part of our conversations included looking at different comparable cities for zoning examples that could potentially address some of the issues that were brought up. During the zoning committee meetings, we used a couple of different codes from the region, including Bellevue, Kentucky, where I formerly was a zoning administrator for eight and a half years, Yellow Springs, where I did zoning there for about a year. So two codes I was familiar with that I felt were applicable to Mount Healthy and helpful. Another one is Cincinnati's Draft Land Development Code to kind of get a perspective of what a bigger city would look like in zoning. And sometimes they have developed matrices and systems that allow for a more complicated process that is still a little more easy to understand. We also looked at other suburban communities like Milford, Ohio. I think we looked at Hamilton. It's not listed on here as well. So we went through an exhaustive study of different codes to figure out what's the best way to approach some of the issues that Mount Healthy had listed as concerns. We developed the draft zoning code in April 2020, which for better or worse coincided with lockdown, which kind of put the project on pause for a couple of months. But once some of the restrictions lifted in the summer, we were able to resume meetings, both in person and over Zoom for the rest of the year to review the new code draft. That information was then taken through section by section from the committee and then incorporated into a second draft code, which was developed by February of this year. We presented that code to the zoning committee and to the Business Association last month and used that feedback, plus some final feedback from the city staff and the city attorney, to develop the code that you are, that's in front of you guys today. In the process and the timeline, this is the Planning Commission review. So once the Planning Commission has made a decision on recommending, recommendation for this code, it would go to the City Council for final adoption. So what is in the new code? 180 pages. You probably had received it. Bill, did you print it in paper?
We did print for the commission, yes.
So you printed it out in paper, so you received it in the whole 180-page glory. The way the code is laid out, it's a Microsoft Word document with track changes enabled. So the lines and comments on the right are comments from myself and staff and other people who have reviewed the code. And some of the bullets are replacements, additions, or deletions. All of that stuff was tracked through the code development process, so you can get a good sense of what was added, changed, removed, or brought forward. So overall, the majority of the content of the code when it comes to regulations of lot sizes, of setbacks, of building heights, has not changed. Fences, accessory structures, and other things that were regulated by your existing code have been maintained and incorporated in new code. And the approval process for getting to Planning Commission for conditional uses, zoning code amendments, map amendments, et cetera, are the same as well. And references to city charter are integrated throughout to reinforce the process for the city charter Mount Healthy. What we have done is we've identified and updated the usage charts. They are now color-coded and laid out in a logical order. Yellow and orange signifies residential, purple and teal is commercial and CBD, pink is industrial, and green is recreational zones. The diagrams and illustrations that were developed by our team illustrate the building placements, setbacks, and other examples to help users visualize exactly how the code is implemented for them and what those elements mean and entail. And you can see on the page here that we have a couple of diagrams that show the minimum lots area, the side yard setbacks, driveway setbacks, accessory structure setbacks. For business districts, we have a similar assemblage of buildings to show that this is the typology for, and the one at the bottom is the central business district, for example, for that zone. We streamlined the zones. There are a couple of double-lettered zones called DD, EE, FF. They are kinds of specialized zones for multifamily, commercial, and industrial. We have turned those into, or excuse me, grandfathered them into planned districts, planned zoning districts. And those, that's the type of classification that greatly, most greatly applies to those types of zones. The other thing that we've done is we've merged the E1 zoning with the E-zone. In the existing code, there is only one discerning difference between both zones, and that has to do with cell towers. Speaking of cell towers, I'm kind of maybe jumping ahead here. So I will get to cell towers later, but we've also worked on some cell tower regulations as well. So overall, the zoning map does not change, unless you want to rezone into a planned utility district or change other zoning as a conventional zoning would allow. We have reviewed and revised the conditional uses. We've added a whole slew of additional new conditional uses, addressing mobile vending such as food trucks, addressing short-term rentals such as VRBO and Airbnb, and also group homes, which are now, need to be spaced out further apart than they were before, in addition to analyzing certain things such as traffic and other impacts onto the adjoining land uses and streets and sidewalks. We've updated the conditions for existing conditional uses on all conditional uses. So if you see a use on the usage table that says, has a C next to it, but doesn't have a specific conditional use classification, it would also be governed by the several subjects of the new conditional use outline, which looks at the comprehensive plan and conforming to that plan and to the Mount Healthy plan, looks at negative potential impacts, including dust, noise, heat, glare, and traffic, and other things as dictated by the Planning Commission. Findings for approvals has also been outlined in the code to help guide the Planning Commission in making recommendations to council. And then here's cell towers. We have regulations. The overall, the cell tower ordinance is as very standard as required by the FCC in the state of Ohio, cell tower ordinance. What we did add, and this is a concern that's been cropping up in a lot of cities across the country, is these 5G towers or these shorter towers that are in downtowns that are on streets. We now recommend that those be placed in alleys where possible, within the timeframe that's allowed by federal regulations. We do other, we have also instituted other process-oriented revisions. We have established an eight-point test for variance review language, which is state-tested in court. We've identified, we developed a two-tiered site plan review for smaller projects and larger projects and identified, outlined, excuse me, outlined and identified those requirements in the code. And that's the example that you see on the right at, it's on section 155.135 in the code. And we've also, for the time being, eliminated the Architecture Review Board. This is a board that was put into place after the adoption of the comprehensive plan. It has never been fully instituted, so we are going to, we're removing it for now, and the city will return to it to find a better way to have it move forward in a capacity that would be useful for the city. And that, and temporarily, those functions and duties will be incorporated into the Planning Commission process. The parking requirements for the new code, in general, have been removed. Our study of the downtown business district found that there were well over, I believe it was 400 and something spaces of off-street parking in the city's downtown business district. Most of that has been underutilized, so we found that it was necessary to just remove those restrictions for now. And what that does, it doesn't say, it doesn't mean that anyone can, no parking is allowed. It just means that no parking is required. What we find in these situations is that parking typically is dictated by market forces, so parking typically ends up being, more parking gets built than what's needed anyway due to finances and financing factors and development and other things. One thing we are requiring, though, that is non-negotiable, is handicap parking for new developments. And that is something that the zoning committee found was very integral to allowing accessibility for new developments, so that is required. What we do actually have parking requirements, an entire section of requirements, and this is now designed for, if the Planning Commission chooses to institute that, that section, whether it's through a conditional use, or a PUD, or some other development control, the Planning Commission now has the power to enact or allow those requirements to take hold for new development. So it's not entirely gone away. Next, we have signage, as I said earlier and alluded to. We were looking at revising the signage ordinance to allow for projecting signage again, so as you're driving or walking down the street, you will know what businesses are up ahead in a more visible manner. We have based these regulations on other regulations for downtowns, such as in Bellevue and in Yellow Springs and other walkable downtowns. So that is a regulation that has become very standard in other towns, and we have adopted those standards as well. We have new regulations for temporary signage regarding putting out flags or pennants or other things, and how long that duration is. We've also allowed for signage boards to be allowed, to be out for downtown businesses in the CBD district. We did have a couple of issues that we reviewed with staff before the, this code went to you guys, and I am pleased to say, I think it was a very productive conversation. A couple of the things that cropped up, we were able to kind of figure out potential additions to the code, and I'll review those here. The first one is regarding front yard gardens. The code as, prior to being amended a few weeks ago, did not have any regulations for this. Staff recommended that we do have regulations for it to allow for gardens to be allowed within six feet of the building. They should, no vegetation should grow taller than front, than the front yard fence height, which is 42 inches. And vegetable gardens are now defined, so we know exactly what types of vegetation is allowed to be considered a garden. There was a concern about Airbnb storage, which is a new type of thing that Airbnb is allowing people to do, is to store their stuff in other people's garages. And we've added a general prohibition to that in the conditional use section. The front yard fence requirements, we now retain the decorative fence requirement from the existing code. That is something that staff referred, was preserved. There is a regulation for outside storage of household items. We cleaned that language up, so it doesn't conflict with property maintenance code and other, other codes that are applicable. Nuisance violations in the central business district zone, this is a concern that cropped up from some incidents in the business district over the last few months. And we have ensured that there's a regulation that generally governs noise and light, glare, and other kinds of nuisance activities that are happening in any part of the city now, not just the central business district. And this is actually some standard code that's in a lot of other zoning codes as well, so we just adopted that. And that is now in the code. Non-conforming use certification is something that was requested as well, and we've added that. As a matter of fact, we have some new language from the city attorney that I would recommend that we incorporate into the code as it's adopted, and we can review that later. And then finally, the violation penalty was updated to reflect the current standards, the current violation penalty in the zoning code. And so with that, we arrive at the President. And it's, as I said before, I've thoroughly enjoyed working with the Mount Healthy team and the zoning committee on this zoning code update. And I believe that the zoning code is a very, a very good step towards Mount Healthy achieving its goals under the Healthy Hilltops Plan, the comprehensive plan, and other visions from the city leadership. With that, I'll turn the flow over to anyone for questions, or if Gordon and Bill want to say anything, they can, as well.
Maybe have comments?
Okay.
You can go, if you want to go up to the microphone.
Yeah. Comments and a couple of questions. First, I have the first draft of everything here. I did not print out a second 180 pages of it also. I felt maybe just easier to ask a few questions. One on accessory structures, I noticed that there was a 10-foot setback for a rear yard, and Bill had mentioned that in one of his items. Was that corrected as far as the distance, on how far a, an accessory structure may sit off of a rear lot line?
How far, you said you're looking at draft one?
Yeah, my draft one mentioned 10 feet, and just 10 feet seemed like it was a lot. And I just wanted to clarify if anything was addressed on that.
Then with my original list I submitted, you said you incorporated all my entire list.
Okay. Yeah, I have here, I'm on the fences. Okay, I crossed out 10 and added three feet in length and three feet from any principal building. Is that what you guys have?
What? Yeah. The original was five feet from the sidelines and 10 feet from the rear lot line. Then you had 10 feet from any principal structure.
And I have three feet from any principal structure.
Okay.
That was what you guys requested.
Okay. My main concern is how far it sits off of property line with some of these smaller yards, how much room there is. I know we need room for maintenance around them. 10 feet can mean no big difference with some of these yards, so that's one of the things I wanted to clear up. Couple of things for thought when reviewing this ordinance. One was churches within a business district. You know, churches are already permitted in residential districts and almost just about every district, but churches, for the most part, are a nonprofit organization or non-tax paying. And there has been a big trend of churches going into shopping strips, business districts, all sorts. While a day or, a day or two when they are in service, a lot of the people do sometimes go around the business district, but the more of these facilities that go into your business district seems to steer away what business and tax income does come into the area. I think it should be considered for your main business district of like E, I think some of it is addressed in the CB, Core Business District, that it be considered as a conditional use, that it be reviewed, and to determine if it is going to be detrimental to your business area and tax income for the city. So that is one of the items I think should be taken into consideration when reviewing and looking over this ordinance.
One thing on that, Gordon, I think currently just the Core Business District, it regulates it, and it puts a maximum, how's that wording in there, John? Do you have that in front of you?
The maximum is, I believe, 35%.
35%? So right now, the only place where we prohibit or limit churches, nowhere is it prohibited, it's permitted everywhere, is in the Core Business District. We said that it, the maximum square footage, we try to determine that would, would, would then, if it reached that in the Core Business District, then no other churches could come in. That's currently, I think, how the code reads. What, Gordon, you're saying is more limitations on the business areas, or at least?
Your main retail shopping areas? I think that should be considered. You know, you've got a giant shopping strip. Those are constantly evolving, as we see. You know, you go into the more old-time, walking-around feel versus a mall. Malls aren't around anymore. But you've got two giant anchors within a shopping strip, and both giant anchors happen to be a church. What is that providing to your retail strip? What is it providing to the city? I think at minimum, it should be reviewed, so it can be looked over and see what is best for the city with those commercial areas.
What's the 35%, 35% of businesses, of land space?
Did we base it on square footage, or did we base it on?
I think it's based on acreage.
On acreage? Yeah, 35% of acreage of the down, of the Core Business District. Yeah, thirty-five percent of acreage of the down, of the core business district. Yeah, that would be.
My second item on the list, which I'd like to comment regarding, is, uh, fences. Uh, I've never been a fan of front yard fences. Currently, our old code permits, uh, fences in the front yard. The new code is permitting fences within a front yard. Um, to me, within the neighborhood, um, it, sometimes it can look cluttered, um, restrictive, closes in the corridor. Uh, and I think when you go down the street, for the most part, you like to see the front yards, you like to feel a little bit of the openness, um, instead of something being right up against the street. Uh, other things I feel when considering fences in the front yard, uh, emergency personnel, how easy it is for them to get into and around, uh,
To a home.
Whether it's dragging a hose over the fence, or fences being locked, uh, dogs in the front yard, whatever. How, how does delivery, delivery person, emergency personnel be able to approach just your public front door to, you know, try to talk to someone?
What about limiting the height of the, the fence in the front yard?
Well, it, it is written, I think currently, that as long as it's a decorative-type fence.
Yeah, but that could be eight feet tall. What about limiting them to four, to four feet or something?
Yeah, um, but just the containment and how much you want within the, the front yard of, of a home, uh, business, whatever. Also, uh, consider pets and people walking along the road. Um, dogs jumping along the fence, trying to bite kids, people, whatever. Uh, you're walking your dog and, you know, you come across the fence here and there. I think those are things to be considered, uh, on something like this. Many towns have eliminated fences within the front yard and only allow them in the side and rear yards. Uh, I think to each town, it's its own, um, there are a lot of fences out there currently. And it can run into the same situation as a lot of things out there of, they become an existing nonconforming if things were to change, or do you keep it the same? That's up to this body here to decide on.
Can I have a little clarification?
Yes.
On the previous note about, uh, fence churches, it's actually seven percent of the CBD?
Seven. Yeah, I thought thirty-five was a lot.
Yeah, a lot, uh, and also there's an acreage, uh, restriction of, yeah, so the CBD district contains approximately twenty-eight acres, seven percent equals approximately two acres. That's the overall acreage restriction. And then a point of clarification on the front yard fence regulations, uh, currently front yard fences in the proposed code are not to exceed four feet in height.
Okay, so that answers that, yep.
Four foot is your normal height of a fence. You know, privacy fences are your higher six foot.
Right.
And those are currently only allowed on the side or rear yard.
Okay.
But, for a side yard for a corner lot, it is considered a front yard, and they have to leave a vision triangle, which is, uh, three feet on each side.
But, um, still, you know, consider, I mean, I guess a chain-link fence isn't considered an ornamental-type fence, but, um, a picket fence, you know?
The regulation says decorative fence shall be limited to commonly referred to as a split rail, wrought iron, decorative metal, wood picket fence, but shall exclude chain-link wire fences or committed directed, or committed directed decorative fences less than thirty percent open to light and air. If it's more than thirty percent open, then you cannot be a chain-link fence.
But again, um, you know, things to consider, um, you know, like I said, one of my thoughts have always been, uh, emergency personnel, whether it's a wrought iron, picket fence, whatever, um, trying to drag a hose across one of those. Again, if something's locked or dogs around, you know, just trying to get emergency personnel because someone's non-responsive, uh, trying to get to the front door, uh, those sort of things to think about. Uh, speaking of animals, um, I did have some discussion regarding the number of animals that a homeowner could have. I felt it excessive, um, that twelve chickens could be on a half-acre lot, which seems to be about the norm size for a lot of Mount Healthy lots, and twenty-four for a, um, one acre and greater. Now, I understand there was a representative, I think from 4H, that gave some description regarding some of this stuff. I know this is something where people are going to have their own egg-laying hens, um, having gardens within their yards, being self-sufficient. But I think there, there's an extent to some of this, uh, you know, rural America in a town is not the same as it is now. You know, the, the outskirts, I can understand where you have a number of animals, but, um, when you have houses right up against each other, back-to-back and everything like that, I just can't imagine twelve chickens running around in a yard, um, maintenance on it and everything else with it. It's my personal opinion, um, I feel it should be about half that number. Um, it just seems excessive to me. Um, two more items. One, I want to jump towards rear, um, we had, I have mentioned to this once before, and, um, I had rediscovered it. Our current requirements for a zoning permit, we require any new business that comes into town, obtain a zoning occupancy permit. We do this so we know what is coming into town, make sure the business is compatible to the structure that it is, um, the plan operating out of, to ensure that it is safe meets building codes. It, it also lets us reevaluate each building to make sure things are up to date, there are not current violations on the building. I had mentioned that there was an exception within this ordinance, and this happens to be under obtaining a zoning permit, which, um, in the early version, I think it was one fifty-one, I think it's one forty-one.
It's one fifty-one.
One fifty-one, okay.
One fifty-five, one one, one one, A.
Yeah, and number three on there provides an exception.
Gordon, could you give that number again, so everybody else here?
One fifty-one, point one four one?
One five one.
One five one, okay, so one, the early version was one four one, second version was one five one.
You have the one about the last year requirements.
So it's one fifty-five, point one five one. Um, it's like A three. This provides an exception for the zoning permit, that if the place is reoccupied or reused, they do not require a zoning certificate if the zoning administrator finds that all the following apply. That is, the reoccupation or reuse results in a land use that is authorized by right in the zoning district. So if it is on the list as a permitted use, then that will qualify. The reoccupation or reuse is the same or less intense of use than the predecessor's use. And the reoccupation or reuse does not require any exterior changes to the approved site other than signs, aesthetic changes such as painting, et cetera. And the reoccupation or reuse does not require a greater number of off-street parking spaces according to chapter twelve sixty-four, um, other than what's provided on site.
One five five, one eleven.
Okay. To me, a lot of these exceptions fall under the category of an occupancy permit for, um, building code uses, which, that is acceptable under the building code. Under the zoning code, I feel will give an exception for a business, if one bar moves out, another bar can move in. And again, our, our thought has always been that we want to regulate and know what business is coming in, um, clientele, make sure the place hasn't been torn up and they're coming right back in and, you know, reusing the place. Uh, to monitor every business that's coming in, and that's the reason for having a zoning use and occupancy permit. And I feel that this section here, the exception, should be eliminated.
Bill, how do you know if somebody changes the occupancy from the permit?
Either we come across it or someone, um, would apply for something.
Okay, do you inspect those businesses or periodically?
We do inspect them before they operate.
Okay.
Yes.
But to answer your question, now, we don't have a very thorough inspection program. Now that we've, you know, um, Steve just notified me today that we are now a medic, um, you know, uh, fire department, um, one of the goals that we had from the levy, and s- six of the seven people have been hired. One of the offshoots of that is going to be more inspections from the fire department, more annual inspections. We just, we just weren't able to do that, so that wa, that, that will help with some of this too, and will help us be able to identify, hey, wait a minute, what is this business? Because honestly, it happens. You don't, you don't know, you know, I mean, we've struggled at times trying to even get in locations.
Right.
You know, uh, so, uh, so anyway.
Yeah, half the time, it does come from a fire department, because they are required to do their annual inspection, and then they'll let us know if something has changed, or some sort of, uh, how they are using it changes.
So, so let me get, so if I understand what you're saying, Gordon, is, is that you would want to eliminate the, the, the exceptions A, B, C, and D, so that it's a requirement that a zoning occupancy permit come, be, 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 uh, uh, requested, and we issue any time a business changes?
Yes, yes, if there's a new business coming in or change.
If it's a bar, you can go in a bar, a hair, you know, whatever the case may be.
Yep.
We need to get in there to see, to make sure things are safe.
Yes, yes.
So I would, I would offer interpretation, the question is?
Hey, John, you might want to come up to a microphone, um, just, just in case somebody is watching, I know it's hard for them to, to hear, sorry.
Can I hear me through my double mask? The interpretation is the zoning administrator finds, how does the zoning administrator find that the business complies with A, B, C, and D?
Inspection.
So you would be, you would be making contact with that person anyway?
It might be too late, um, and then they're going to say, well, we're the same business. Well, it was a bar before, it was a daycare before, so this part of the code says, I can come in here, I don't have to have a permit. And that's the way I kind of see it.
That would be how you, you would have to agree with that finding, as a zoning administrator.
Yeah.
Would you agree with that finding if that's what, what came to be? If not, or if so, what was the criteria that we would use?
Well, if I go by the criteria listed, if it is the same business and they're not doing anything that is of a more risk value, or, um, you know, basically same operation, I see it as they would not require an occupancy permit. And, and in that case, we don't have a right to go in and check out the place, or to know what the, or to get information on, on them.
So what you really want is contact information?
Operation information, too.
Okay.
They might say they are a, um, say, a bar, and it turns into an entertainment venue also.
That would be a change of use, though. That would be an expansion of, of, of a use.
Yeah, but this way we get it on paper with the application, what is their, um,
You can get it on paper, you just say like, okay, the, the permit is, it's exempt from, from feet at that point. You know, you would get the information, and you would make the determination, you'd get the application anyway. So you'd have that, it just, if, if it doesn't significantly change from one use to another use, then, then it's not required to, for them to actually.
But I think what Gordon is saying is that he, he's running into problems. I know we've, you know, examples like our,
I understand, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, a gr, you know, where we have, it's, it's a rental, you know, facility. And then, you know, and they tell us they're going to be doing, you know, baby showers and this, and then the next thing you know, there, it's an after-hours bar, it's operating until two to five in the morning. If, if they would have gone in and, and applied for a, you know, a, a use, uh, that, you know, um, or on their occupancy described it one way and then it changes, I think, I think we're also saying that that could be helpful, right?
What I'm looking at here is that everybody who comes in with a new business should apply and have that information given to the zoning administrator. And then it's the zoning administrator's determination, through reviewing that application, inspecting the building, whether or not that permit can be, a new permit needs to be issued, or it can be under an existing permit. But you still get the information either way.
Yeah, but, in order to initiate some of the stuff, they, a permit needs to be obtained.
Right.
And that's how we are obtai, and the way I see it, the, it's written, they do not have to obtain a zoning permit.
But I just want to make sure you understand, it's, it's the discretion of the zoning administrator to make that finding. It's your, it's your discretion as a zoning official, and that's just, that's all I want to make sure. It doesn't, doesn't say, because I'm bar B and bar A left, that I can just celebrate and do whatever I want, because I got bar A's certification. It means that you are the deciding factor in it, it's your interpretation of the code. And I want to make sure that that's available to you, because the other way, I mean, you can have it either way, I don't mind, whichever, whichever way the planning commission decides. But I just want to make sure that this is, you understand the way the regulation is written right now.
I understand, but if we are obtaining a zoning occupancy permit for every new business, or change of ownership business, why have the exception? Why put that question into?
That's a, that's a very, that's a very good point. It's something that maybe if, if, if a business is a continuing business and it changes hands, let's say it's, uh, the dairy, the dairy bar, and it changes ownership, and they intend to keep it, it's like, maybe they pass it down to a son or something like that. Uh, or it's a salon that, you know, changes hands or something like that, that is preserved. That's where that kind of comes in. But I could also see your point, that's why the preservation for the, the usage and the intensity of the usage is so key in this, in this thing here, in this, in these passages. So I just want to make, I mean, it, I think, I think we both, there's two different ways to cut this cookie, and it's kind of like six and one and half dozen other kind of thing. I just want to make sure that we, we understand which way to go, and if the planning commission decides, I mean, either way, we're totally fine with that.
And I understand if it is just ownership, say, my brother's taking it over and nothing's changing, or, you know, you're passing it down into the family, uh, that's, that's a little bit different, yes. But if you have Lowe's and then Home Depot buys them out, then I think you've got a borderline on something.
If like the dairy bar changes ownership and starts throwing rape parties, that's a change of use, man. You gotta get a permit in there, and you gotta go from there.
I, I think, you know, from, from our administrative staff, which is first contact for, for people right there. You're putting everything on the zoning administrator, if we have it black and white, okay? Somebody's changing, moving into town, they know, yeah, you have to get a zoning certificate, versus, well, let's call Gordon and see what he thinks. There's no way to offer it.
And, and could that lead into a legal situation of, they didn't have to get a permit, huh, come on, have to get a permit? Then we're crossing lines of, okay, where is, it's, how do we determine that part of it, that they have to get something or not? Versus if it's just really?
Yes, I, I think the two key passages here is the zoning permit shall be required and shall be obtained from the zoning administrator. So from the get-go, it says that you need to go get one. And then in section three, it says unless the zoning administrator finds, I think that's the key passage there, because they have to make an application, and you have to find that there's no significant changes. So it's really, it's really at the discretion of the zoning official. So it's really, it's really at the discretion of the zoning official, but they have to make the application first. That's why this is not in the later section.
I agree, though, I think discretion can, can lead to issues. Scott, do you?
Well, sometimes discretion is nice to have because it also makes your life easier, too, and it, and helps promote business and puts additional advantage, so it, it's valuable. I can see both sides, but as long as you have a rationale for discretion, and your discretion can be, hey, you need to go ahead and get a permit every time. I mean, that, that's not your discretion, too, so you can utilize-
But the problem, but the problem becomes, that's this building official, the next guy that comes may not have that same thing. And then again, you have discrepancies. I personally think, I, I concur with what Gordon's trying, just clarify it, just clarify it. I mean, when I, I agree this discre, having flexibility is good, and that was the intent of what we're trying to do here with the, the code, is make it more business friendly. I mean, we're just asking for, you come in and let us know you're in town, because how many times did we find out, we don't even know that business is here, or we didn't know that was a change of business?
Well, that's where I think John's saying, hey, they, they have to, that's, that's where it starts up at the beginning, hey, you have to have, and so they should be-
But if somebody reads this code, they could say, well, I'm a bar, and I'm just going in as a bar.
Maybe to be clear, if everybody has to apply, because it doesn't necessarily spell that out.
Well, I don't think it does. It said, it said they shall unless you go, you know, prior to the reoccupation or reuse of a non-resident structure, unless the zoning administrator finds that the filing applied. Gordon just said, get rid of those exemptions and just say, yeah, everybody's got to apply. Well, one other thing, if you apply and we require that you have a non-refundable application fee upfront, then now we're, we're determining, okay, you don't need a, we see that you don't need anything, so we have to refund your money now?
Are you, are you, are you, you're collecting payment of application upon approval or at-
Application fee.
At, at, at time of, of, of application?
Yes.
Okay. Well, then you would have to refund that, or you would hold it until you have done your review.
It's just another step that we're going through with, with some of this.
Right.
I think it's all really up to your-
Right, yeah. I, I mean, I don't know if any of the-
Why, I, I'm not sure, is it, would you be required to refund it if you, if you didn't allow that business in there? I mean, there's cost, administrative cost to get through that, why would you have to refund that if you didn't allow them in there? I mean, you wouldn't make it cost prohibitive, but, I mean, to me, I mean, we've talked about this so many times in these, when these businesses come in, they, they come in with a hand-painted sign and, and they're just fly-by-night, and it's like, okay, if you put some money into your business, you're going to be a little bit more serious. So I don't understand why, if, if the city had, I don't know, fifty, seventy-five dollar fee, if for some reason they didn't get through, then they're just out that money because it's, it's a cost of doing business.
Right. But, but convert, opposite of that is, is that if there's discretion left here, if you collect the fee upfront and you determine that with whatever discretion that they didn't need to apply for that, then you'd be refunding it as well, isn't that what you were saying?
I think that what you could do is have a, you know, either you could either pay upfront or, or, because I agree, I think there should be some cost, if there are administrative services, it takes time to review that, even if you say, hey, you don't need it, but if you do need it, then maybe additional money is needed before that permit. I mean, that's a good way to go as well.
If it was undercover, the cost of the operation, and that's what we're doing here, it just, it takes time, we take the permit in, review it, do the inspection, it, it just about bare-bones metal covers the expense for the city.
Yeah, I wouldn't do a refund, e- even if you waived it, because you had to go through those four things to determine you're waiving it, so you're still working. It's just like, you know, my seniors apply for college, they pay an application fee, whether they get in or not, they still, they're out of that money. That's paying for the processing of it.
Right. So, I mean, that is, that's administrative process that, yeah, it's not in the zoning code, but-
Right.
It's definitely something to, to keep in mind.
Yeah.
So, I mean, either way, you guys decide.
So, for clarity, what you would say, I mean, we could, we were talking about potentially eliminating three A, B, C, and D, and it would just read, those one, one, two, and three would read as they exist now, and that, that should require everybody to get an occupancy permit.
You would have to cut half of three.
Right, and the la, unless, yes.
At, at the end last.
Yeah, prior to the reoccupation or reuse of any non-resident lot or structure, period.
So, okay.
Those were my comments. I only have one other question for John, and that would be, your cell towers. Did you find, there was, five years ago, it became a big issue of putting large towers within right-ofways, and since they're in the public right-ofways, they call them utilities. Did you find anything on, are there ways of regulating that, of something being between a sidewalk and curb, there being a hundred-foot tower, and because it's in a public right-ofway, they have their right?
Yeah, so that's a really good question, and I did a lot of research on that, and there's not a whole lot of regulation that is out there. The regulation I did find was from the cell tower industry, and they said, go ahead and do it. So what I did is I kind of crafted my own, under the FCC guidance from the Telecommunications Act. Basically, planning commissions and cities are allowed to review and, and hold regulations within a timeframe, and as we've had many discussions with Bill about, the state of Ohio has changed that timeframe to make it shorter. So what I've done is I've added a regulation that strongly encourages those types of poles to be located in public alleys behind, typically, this is something that is really detrimental or to the aesthetics of business districts. So I think that's where this most likely would, would be applicable to, to put them in the alleys wherever possible. So that is the recommendation that I was able, that's the change I was able to craft, I think could potentially be useful to you guys.
But it can only be recommendation.
Basically, when, when the, you, you, the whole thing is, is the whole thing about cell tower regulations that they're like, you have to get to them within that certain amount of time, and you have to, you can't, you can require up to a point, but you have to have, you know, I basically said, unless it has been found by the planning commission. So the, the key phrase there is that the planning commission has to make findings of fact, saying that there's no way you can locate a cell tower in the location that we want you to locate it in. So that's at the discretion of the planning commission. So that's the best, that's the best I can do under federal guidelines. Go ahead.
One addition on the zoning certificate, I, I know Mr. Coker and Gordon and myself, we discussed several issues several times. It's always a owner or occupant. In past experience, we have some property owners that-
Hey, Bill, why don't you, why don't you come up to the mic? Yeah.
Do you have a list of stuff you need, you want to ask? Do you have a list you want to ask?
No.
Okay.
Basically, you know, we're looking at, you know, several business owners, you know, they, they own maybe a mall or strip center, they just want to come in, they want to get the place occupied, they don't care. And some, and I know the last three or four years, we spent a lot of hours trying to straighten up messes from the property owners moving people in, spent, you know, several hundred hours, as a matter of fact. What I'm suggesting on this, it's just black and white, it's a property owner's responsibility to make sure they obtain that zoning certificate. That way, he's not renting it out to a, signing a one-year lease, and all of a sudden this guy finds out, hey, I can't, I can't operate here. It's just a simple change in the verbiage.
But it does say that property owner or visitor or agent.
It's agent, I, I think we need to specify the property owner.
Just the property owner itself, so an LLC or a trust.
Yeah.
Who's, who's the owner there?
I think, I think agent means owner, right? It, yeah, agent, it's not, agent can't be referred to as the business that's going in there. I think Bill's citing examples of, of, of places, times where we, you know, we had vacancies and we find out, well, they rented this place to them for a year, and it's not even permitted use there. And they've got a lease, and they're not doing anything with it. So, but the property owner, they don't care because they got a lease, you know, so-
And here, if I said, which is your owner or agent, now here, if you change your terminology to owner or tenant. Well, that's for, that's for-
For a zoning.
The zoning permit is, is, is property owner. The request of the owner or tenant, the zoning administrator should issue a zoning permit for any building structure or permit, this is going to affect the date, that's after you get your zoning certification. If you've got, if you've got a building permit or maybe you're going to build a certain structure or, or maybe design, then the tenant can potentially apply.
But I said, initially, if, if action goes back, we need a responsible party from the owner, whether, you know.
Well, you would find that from the zoning permit.
I just want that spelled out, it just-
I think one of the things he's looking at is a landlord or owner can falsely sell something to a tenant, and they, after they have put a lot of money into it, they, they find out that there are not a conforming use or something is wrong.
It's kind of like a rent-to-own situation.
Give you a good example, we have what used to be a McDonald's storage building on Hamilton Avenue, got rented the property out for a used car lot, there's no plumbing, no ventilation, nothing in there.
But that's, that's a, that's a change of use then from a storage to automobile sales, right?
Well, we're still-
There'd be a zoning permit from the owner at that point.
Right. The, the owner should not, not have rented that, but if it was responsibility specifically on that owner, then we know, if we had to take some money to court, that's what we-
But for the, for the use permit, you would go through you, the owner to you guys.
Right. Just for the owner, not the tenant, the owner. That's all a basket, so.
Yes, for the, for the permit, that makes sense. And then for the, the reason why D has, sorry, E has a tenant, is if the tenant-
One fifty-five, one fifty-one.
After they've gotten their use certificate from the city.
Yeah, okay.
Does that make sense? So in, in your instance, that's a change of use from storage to car sale, so that would require a zoning permit, and the building owner would have to apply for that.
In your view, if it was a personal situation, you bought the owner's tenant, and the tenant spent four or five thousand dollars of their own money, they're going to find out, can't use it.
That is, that's a rough situation, and, you know, and I hope this is code, and a lot of you guys, property owners are accountable to that. So there's a situation, that situation doesn't happen in the, in the, the tenant is an out on expense on it, because that's, that's hurtful for that. They're, they're both potentially not a conforming use to the code, and also, and now being taken for a spin by the landlord, so.
I think with people in this room here, you have been there a couple of years ago, we spent, I mean, a couple, a couple hundred hours just on one property on Hamilton Avenue over the issues over there.
Right. I, I mean, I think it's, it's, it's another layer, it's still not going to keep a bad landlord from doing a bad thing at the end of the day, so, I mean, I, I think it's, it's a point well taken.
I have a question while we're on permits, how do we convey conditional use permits down to the people that's actually checking on those? Do we issue those with the permit? So how do you know when you go into a location, it has conditional use permit?
If somebody comes in and a use requires a conditional use on a zoning, they have to come to the planning commission first to get approved, before they can reissue a zoning.
Right, but then we give a, a conditional use, how does that get conveyed down to you guys that you know there's conditionals on their, on their permit?
I guess we really should create a form that would, that you send that back to us, but most times-
Well, we, we kind of do that because we do, once we, once planning commission, and you've signed on this, Don, we, we put a motion together, any, anything that has to have a conditional use from the planning commission, we do a mo, we do a, a resolution from the planning commission that outlines the conditions, and that goes to council, but it also goes, goes to them, so they see what-
Okay, so they do see that, then? Okay.
I understand this, part of this question, and that is, we currently file the conditional use, accepted or denied, with that application or that permit number. Our problem is, I mean, we do keep a file of conditional uses or variances, but our problem is, right now, they're filed with the permit number. It really would, would be best that we refile things according to address, so we could look into that address and see if they've had variances or conditional uses in the past. Our only problem is, we got hundreds, if not thousands, of hours to redo all of that stuff. So we're-
Yeah, but that's really nothing that's part of this code, though, that would be more how you guys run, administrate, administrate that. Okay. Um, go ahead, go ahead, John.
Or Jim had a question.
Well, yeah, I think that we got, just, just to clarify, I think, I, I, I just made a few notes. Scott has some recommendations that, that we need to, that, that the planning commission hasn't seen yet, we need to let them know. It's more of on the legal side, and kind of when we've gone through this process, if there's legal or anything like that, it's just been kind of, yeah, that makes sense, but I want you guys to, to hear that. So Scott needs to do that, and then we'll, well, then we'll open it up to the public for any additional input or any, or any questions that we may have. Is that, is that, is that good? Okay, just real quick, Scott, it shouldn't-
In my review of John's work, I, I thought it was an excellent job and pretty encompassing in regards to everything. But one thing that I've come across in my experience with respect to different communities is non-conforming uses, there always seemed to be a sticking point and a, a source of litigation, and so I kind of focused on that. One thing that I thought would, would add some clarity to the, you know, proposed amendments or revisions would be in section, initially in section one five five point two oh three C and C five, that's the non-conforming use section. I don't know what page that is on your one hundred and eighty-page packet.
Uh, page one fifteen.
Page one fifteen. And, and there, section C says, if a non-conforming use is discontinued, I'm sorry, is abandoned for any reason for a period of more than one year, well, the reality is, the legal abandon is, is a pretty high bar to show, so I would recommend, because the point of a non-conforming use is, hey, this is a legal use that existed prior to a change in the zoning amendment, and while it's something that may have been allowed in the past, you know, kind of more modern times sometimes dictates that, hey, we want to move on from that formerly allowable use. And so the idea is to ultimately, and this is, I'm citing, summarizing case law I've read about, is that the point is, non-conforming uses ideally will wither and die, right? Because then you moved completely into the modern times. That being said, showing that somebody has abandoned something is a, a pretty high standard, so I would recommend utilizing, also incorporating if that use is discontinued or vacated. So that opens up arguments that are easier to kind of satisfy if there's ever an issue contention. And I use that same language in C five, where it talks about other actions which, in the opinion of the zoning administrator, constitute an intention on the part of the property owner or less C to abandon the non-conforming use, in, in addition to abandon, I put discontinue or vacate. And then I also have, and I'll just read a few more sections that I would like to end, I would recommend ending, adding, I'm sorry, to section one fifty-five, and this would be one fifty-five point two oh six, where the burden of proof, the burden of establishing that any use or structure is lawfully non-conforming under the provisions of this code shall in all cases be upon the owner of such non-conformity and not upon the city. Essentially, I just put the onus, the onus on the person who's asserting that it's a non-conforming use, hey, you have to bring us the evidence that satisfies, you know, the head of the zoning and building department, and if not, if, if that application for a certificate of non-conforming use is denied, in his opinion, he can then go to the board, you know, the BZA and, and present his case there, at which point, if, you know, he doesn't have enough evidence, he can appeal to the comma, quarter, comma, please. But throughout that entirety of that time, the burden is on that, you know, person asserting the non-conforming use to show evidence substantial enough to support that claim. And then with the idea of zoning certificates for legal non-conformities, I would recommend adding, and bear with me, this is a little, it's not a hundred and eighty pages, but it's, it's a, it's a thick paragraph. One fifty-five point two oh seven, zoning certificates for legal non-conformities, section A, the owner of any non-conforming use, structure, or lot shall apply to the building and zoning department for a zoning certificate of non-conformance to establish the legal- for a zoning certificate of non-conformance to establish the legality of such non-conformity as a specified date, or shall apply if the owner asserts any non-conforming use, structure, or lot as a defense to an alleged zoning violation. If upon, this would be section B, if upon reviewing the, the, the application for a zoning certificate of non-conformance, the head of the building and zoning department determines that the used structure or lot in question was lawfully existing at the time of the effective date of the provision, creating the non-conformity in question, and remains lawfully existing subject only to such non-conformity at the time of such application, and that any required affidavit is in order, the head of the building and zoning department shall issue a zoning certificate of non-conformance evidencing such facts and setting forth the nature and extent of the non-conformity. Otherwise, the head, uh, of the building and zoning department shall refuse to issue such certificate and shall declare such used structure or lot to be in violation of the zoning code of Mount Healthy, at which point that person could then appeal to the BZA. And essentially, what this does, this process, a lot of people have non-conforming uses, I'm sure there's plenty that exist right now uh, in, in Mount Healthy, but the problem typically is, when you get into litigation, is that, you know, in order to, the idea is that you can't expand or enlarge a non-conforming use, right? Well, you have to start, okay, at what point, you know, is a non-conforming use? You have to detail what it is, and once you do that, then you can, in that certificate of non-conformity, twenty, thirty years down the road, you'll be able to know, okay, yeah, they are clearly making efforts to expand or enlarge this in some regard. So, I think it just kind of sets the bar of where the non-conforming use is, and if in down the road, they try to enlarge it, or there's any issue at it at all, it just, there's, there's a record now that is with the city, and we have. Or there's a record in, in the BZA and, and down the road, along that line as well. Finally, uh, I would also recommend one fifty-five point two oh five, two oh eight, fees, all important fees. Any application of a zoning certificate of non-conformance or other requests for action pursuant to the regulations of this chapter shall be subject to and accompanied by a fee as established by the city council. Such fees shall be collected in advance of any application, review, inspection, or issuance of any certificate or approval. And so that kind of follows along the lines of what the mayor was talking about. There's an application fee, that doesn't mean you're going to get the, the okay, because there's going to be time and effort that's going to be taken by the adminis, the staff to review and, and determine whether or not they believe there's sufficient evidence to support an alleged, uh, legal and non-conforming use certificate. So, um, that's pretty much all I have, I don't know if you have any questions in that regard.
I mean, I, I think all that legal mumbo jumbo he just said is, is a great example, and I don't want to pick on anything, but like, we all were part of this, right, with the core business district and the, and the non-conforming uses of daycares, right? We've all, everybody kind of walks around saying, yeah, they're not, but what this would require them to do is to, is on both parties and us to have a certificate so that we can establish when this is, and so that we don't come down the road and say, wait a minute, you know, where's this? Do you have a non-conforming use certificate? No, you know, well, then you can't operate here, or yes, I do, oh, great, you know, so, again, it kind of, perfect timing, because Gordon was just talking about the, the frustration they have on how the filing system, this would be another way of kind of tracking that. You know, we've had that discussion with daycares, you know, we've had many discussions on, on the trailer park of, how do you establish where these things began, and this would, this would be helpful, so. Kind of in layman's terms, but Scott thoroughly covers it there on the legal side of things, so.
Yeah, it, it's, it's nice, because then, you know, you, it, somebody can come, if they want, on their own, hey, you know, the best time, obviously, to go ahead and apply for it would be, hey, once there's a change, you should go ahead and apply for a non-conforming use, because it's going to be very easy to show that, hey, two years ago, I was, you know, running this business or doing this use, or this structure is here, as opposed to, you know, twenty, thirty years down the road, then you've got some problems.
And another good example of, of when, 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 back to what we were talking about with an occupancy permit, right? If, if they come, if it's, if it's a daycare changing from one business to the other, that's when we could tell this new business, well, you better get a, a certificate of non-conforming use from that, this business, or you're going to be deemed, you know, non-conforming and, and not an illegal use there. So, I think it's just, it's just good to kind of, you know, another layer to cover things.
And, and another important thing is, non-conforming use is, they run with the land, so they don't, you know, say if it's a, if it's a use that, you know, the daycare in a business, you know, that you're talking about, if someone, you know, if there's an owner in between, say the person goes, you know, uh, the person who buys it from him and runs daycare too, they can continue that use. Now, with respect to non-conforming uses, if you stop, if you, you know, abandon, discontinue, or vacate that use for two years, i.e. to say the person who sells the daycare sells it to somebody who has a, a, a conforming use, a hardware shop, and then all of a sudden, three years later, that hardware shop sells it to someone who wants to run a daycare, but that daycare is not allowed, because there's been that period of interruption, right? That's no longer a, an allowable use that they won't be, be able to do, and we'll be able to document that then.
One question, um, when do you see an application or certificate being initiated? Is it when an event occurs?
I, I think it either can be, if it's, it, it's on the, the owner of the, or the person who's asserting the non-conforming use, either they can go ahead and on their, on, on their own accord, bring it to your attention and apply for one, or that's where I put the language in there. If they're, you know, if, if you, if the staff somehow issues a, a violation of the code, right, and they say, well, we've been, you know, we have a non-conforming use, well, if you're going to say that, you then have to make an application that we can evaluate that defense. At that point, then they have to apply for a non-conforming use, if they're saying, hey, we weren't in violation because we were here, or this happened way ahead of time, if that makes sense. And then at that point, then, again, who's the burden on? It's on them to prove, you know, to your satisfaction, or the BZA satisfaction, that they are entitled to a non-conforming use. And if they're not, then that violation that's been issued is going to be, is going to be upheld. If that makes sense. Okay.
I'm a little confused on that, so, you're not saying that you're going to go back to non-conforming businesses that are in business right now and tell them that they have to have their certificate, it's just moving forward?
Yes, I, if I was, uh, that being said, if I was an owner of a non-conforming use or a business, I would go ahead and make sure I got that non-conforming use, because then that alleviates any future concern about down the road. Because, like I said, when time, you know, when time, you know, over years and years, it gets, it gets harder and harder, and people who are, you know, could provide evidence or testimony, you know, they get older and older, and sometimes they get, you know, fewer and fewer, and. I mean, I, I just had a, I've, a case that involved bench billboards in Corwin Township that, um, you know, and they didn't even own the property, and they were asserting non-conforming use, and it's been a song and dance, and I mean, I, Corwin Township filed suit in two thousand and fifteen, and we finally, six, and, you know, it's been half a decade that, you know, we finally got an answer from the court, and through all the appeal process and whatnot, so it, these litigations go on for a long time. So, it's nice to go ahead and, and have a good starting point. If you, if you take care of things on the front end, it, it does save ultimately, you know, a lot of litigation cost in the, in the back end. Unless you guys have any other questions?
Thanks, Scott.
I said my legal mumbo jumbo.
Jim, did you have a question?
Yeah. I think we're, I think we're ready, right? Yeah, for public comment?
Good evening, uh, Jim Lowenberg, fourteen eighteen St. Clair Avenue, and I did serve on the committee that helped to review the zoning code. Just a, a couple of comments, one is referring to the, the information about backyard chickens. There actually was extensive conversation over a number of years in developing that language, and I would suggest we keep it as it's written in, in the proposal at twelve per half acre. I don't believe there's really been issues or complaints since that was adopted, and there really was extensive review over the course of years. I, I don't think there's a need to change that if it hasn't been an issue. It's something that, that actually is talked about in the Healthy Hills report, is a way to attract people to the community who are interested in urban agriculture, so I would suggest we keep that. The second thing is a, a question for John, when, just, uh, my understanding at, at our last discussion with the committee was dealing with the architectural review committee was, and I just want to make sure the language reflects this in the document. One is that it's not going to be eliminated, but basically, it's going to stay as a placeholder, that if the city decides to, uh, seat people on the architectural review committee, it could then assume those duties, but in the short term, while that does not happen, the planning commission would assume those duties. So, I just want to make sure we're not eliminating it, but instead, sort of, uh, it's, it's not act, acknowledging the fact that it's not active, and until it is active, that the planning commission would, would assume those duties. Is that accurate, or how does it work, how does it range?
The way that the existing ordinance is worded is really, it's, it's hard to put aligned with the, the intent that, um, that we wanted for in the new code, so.
Do you want to come up to the microphone?
Yeah, so.
The architectural review board is a section in the current code, and, um, it would, in order to port it over, we'd have to make it a section in the new code, which would switch around a lot of the, um, the, uh, the organization. We can do it. What I was attempting to do was to go into the planning commission section, uh, which is section, not currently there yet, one five five point one seven, and just put, include it under the planning commission powers and duties, um, as maybe a subcommittee to the planning commission. I can incorporate it there, if that is.
Or it, it could just say that in absence of the architectural review committee, the, the planning commission would.
The, the issue is that the architectural review committee is an advisory body to the planning commission.
Not, not to city council?
I can double check this here, um, my, my intent, my, uh, interpretation of it was that it would be, uh, city, planning commission.
My, my point is, I just wanted to make a move. They've never had a meeting, there's never been a board.
No, I, I, um, agree with you on that, I think that's something that was really.
I recollect, Jim, I thought it was a, it was an advisory panel to the planning commission.
I don't, I don't know.
I think that's what, because typically, you know, that's how we work this up, right? If something, you know, goes to the planning commission, then they recommend it to council, but I can't, I can't remember.
PUD standards. Architecture review board, uh, three members appointed by the mayor, advise the planning commission on the design amenities, quality relationships, and natural features, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, what we can do is actually insert the architectural review board under the planning commission section, and just keep the language from the existing code. Uh, and then that way would be basically a subcommittee or a committee that's under the planning commission.
I think what we're going to need to do here, and I, and I, I have no problem with that, um, I think we need to kind of, for the, for, for the commission here to kind of go through some of these points that we've discussed and, 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 and kind of get conclude, because they kind of vary from what we've presented. If we can do that next, and then maybe that way, we can kind of, one piece at a time here, say, yes, we agree, or no, we don't, it should remain, and then maybe we can start to work towards, and I don't want to push anybody, if, if you guys are comfortable, I know there's a ton of information here. We could always suspend this and come back if you guys need more time.
You can continue without having to say again.
Okay, okay.
Well, especially if we added a couple paragraphs, we can't do anything with this existing document.
Well, we, we could as, we could, we could approve it with, as, 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 as what? How would you determine it, Scott?
As amended.
As amended, as amended, yeah, we could, if we wanted to. But if I, if I may, I've kind of made some notes, and I can kind of go through, you guys, are you guys okay with that? Just to kind of bring it back, and, and, and I, and I want to thank Gordon, because he, he is, he's passionate about this. We've, we've shot him down a couple times before on this, but I encourage him to, I want him to, to provide his opinion. He, he, he has a professional opinion, he does, deals with this every day, um, but we don't always agree, right? But, but, um, but the more he comes back at it, the more I think it's, it's, it's good, and I, and maybe I'll just jump at the first two. One of them happens to be what Jim brought up about the chickens and also front yard fences. You know, as we got input, we continued to have with our zoning committee, you know, uh, meetings and discussions, and, 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 you know, Jamie was on that as well as Kim, you know, two, two things that stick out to me was, no, again, what Jim had mentioned, chickens, it was a thoroughly vetted thing, we had some great input, it's been in place for many years, and I, I can't think of any complaints that we've had. And I think there's places in, things in place, if it becomes, you know, we can get the health department involved if it becomes a, you know, a sanitary type of issue. Fences, again, I think, uh, you know, um, the committee listened to that, but agreed that, you know, I see both sides of it, there is the issue with entry, but, you know, um, you know, having to picket fences sometimes, you know, the American dream or whatever, and, and allowing it. There is a setback, though, too, right? There is a, there, Bill, there's a five-foot setback from the fence, from a sidewalk.
Right, right.
Huh? Of the right away?
Of the roadway, I want to say it's one foot off the roadway.
I believe it's one foot off the right away.
But I, but I thought we regulated it, and put, so a person could put a fence up, up to one foot within the, with, on the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Okay.
From the sidewalk, correct.
Right. So, but a decorative fence, a split rail, wrought iron, or a picket, yeah. And, and the committee entertained their discussions, but again, stood, stood fast, and that's not, those changes aren't in, in the, in existing as it sits now. Now, if the committee wants to change that, we can, but that's kind of where that is. Churches has been a, has kind of been a, I don't know what I want to use a tab, tab, I mean, there's, there's concern there with, that we don't want to allow, you know, religious freedom, but, but at the same time, if, if there are, and we did make, take, I think we dipped our toe into it with the, you know, the core business district where we limited it to seven percent. I think he brings up a valid point of maybe, you know, um, of making it, making a church in, in a E, E retail or in the core business district as a, as a conditional use, just to understand what they're trying to do, um, you know, gather some information, see if it is detrimental, those kinds of things, that may not be a, a kind of a good compromise.
Or should that be anywhere, because it could also be detrimental to residents?
You're right, you're right.
I was about to recommend that, in a lot of codes, it's conditional all across the board.
Okay, yeah, and then that way, we're not, that's fine with me, okay? Because that's not currently how it's presented, right?
Correct.
All right. Go ahead.
That's a holdover from your existing code, too. I was surprised, I was like, okay, I'll just hold on to this and see what happens, so.
Is there also a functional definition for church or community? Because one of the issues we, we've run into before is, you know, you can register as a minister online for ten bucks right now, and then say, I'm a church, now I can open up wherever. I don't know if there's a functional definition that says what a church is, like, is there a requirement for congregations? Is there a requirement for, you know, regular meetings, or?
Articum Farms.
Or is that just taking this too far?
Yeah, Articum Farms Ministry.
Right.
Or, or you go to, yeah, whoops, I want to open up a, and it's a, it's a, it's, we meet every night on Monday night and drink beer and watch football, you know? It's a worship, you know, and it becomes a bar.
There's a couple of things, churches defined in the zoning code, that's one, and then two, churches are, as a conditional use, have to meet certain specifications. So, right now, it's defined as a place of worship, a building or structure, a group of buildings or structures that by design and construction are primarily intended for conducting organized religious worship services. Associated accessory uses include but are not limited to classrooms, meeting halls, indoor and outdoor recreational facilities, daycare, counseling, kitchens, so.
Okay, good, so there is, thank you.
Yep. Hey, Bill, do you want to discuss each item that's been, I guess, brought up by whoever, and, um, go over it as a yes or no to make any changes?
Yeah, that's, I think, what I'm getting to, yeah, that's what, that's what I'm, I, I'm just kind of trying to summarize, and then we can just kind of take it point by point, if we get, if we're, I think if we're comfortable with making a motion, you know what I mean? Because the one that I think that's, that deserves a little more discussion, and I, and I, and I see where you're coming from on this zoning occupancy permit, one fifty-one point one, you know, one fifty-five point one five one, where we could take, um, what was that, where we could take that, modify the sentence like the mayor mentioned on, or the, on, on number three, and then eliminate those next four points, I see a lot of value in that. What's, let's, let's go back to that, just so everybody can see what we're talking about. So, it's on page one oh three. Where, where we go to number three. We could stop with, prior to the reoccupation or reuse of any non-resident lauder structure period, and then I think what we were discussing, and I want to, you know, is that we would then eliminate the rest of that, so that it isn't a discretion thing. It's what we're trying to accomplish here, is that it's not a re, any, anytime a new business comes in, they got to, a minimum, fill out a occupancy permit. And then just in summary, we'll come back to these, I don't want to, you know, force it, and then the last, last thing I think that we talked about was Scott. And then the last, last thing I think that we talked about was Scott's piece, you know, of just adding that additional legal language to that. And in my opinion, if, if the attorney says it's good, it's good for me, and you know what I mean, kind of thing, unless you guys want to take that and read it. So those, I think, one, two, three, four, those, well, and then the final point being the Architecture Review Board, making those modifications as we discussed. So there's six things I'm seeing that we, that we kind of are, are, have come off of from the, how things are presented. Is that, is that, is there by?
Fair.
Okay, so to Gordon's point, do we want to, do we want to kind of come down and and discuss each one of these? Because, you know, is what the committee's wanting to do? So I think the first one is, is to make the change to church as a, as a conditional use in all districts? And that's simply what, I think that's what we're saying, John, right?
So just to clarify, right now it is conditional in, I'm going to go back to the use table here.
What page you on, Bill?
That.
On page 42.
Conditional is still limited to seven percent in the core business.
Correct.
We wouldn't change that, right?
It is conditional in all residential zones. It is permitted only in the E zone. It is not permitted in the OB zone. It is conditional on CBD. It is permitted in both industrial zones and also in the recreational zone.
So John's looking at the chart. Where are, where are you again, John?
Page 42, but I've.
Are you looking at the chart?
At the chart, yes. Under public slash quasi-public, churches is the first one.
So is everybody seeing that's about midway down?
Mm hmm.
So instead, right now we only have a conditional in four areas. We're saying we would make it conditional across the board, right?
And does that include making it conditional in the OB zone, which is currently not permitted? That's my only question.
If it's not permitted, I think it's fine, right?
So anywhere it's, it's currently permitted, make it conditional.
I think that's fair statement. Does everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
So is everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so when we do a motion, what we'll do is, is note that we're, we're, you know, making a recommendation to council. If we want to do this tonight, we don't have to, but if we want to, with it, with the amendments as, as discussed, that John will implement into the thing. Is that, that's how we'll proceed, so.
Okay, but on that, you said, so where it's permitted now, it'll be conditional, but still within the business district, we're maintaining that seven percent.
Correct, and and in the OB district, it's not permitted, right? So no changes to what's, only changes are that we're going to make it conditional in any zone where it's currently permitted. All right, so fences in the front yard. I think, speaking for the committee, but I think we discussed this. We had it on a Zoom call and they, and they, they wanted to maintain that. I don't know if anybody on the board has a different opinion on that. They're decorative, 42 inches can come within one feet. And Gordon, I would, I would encourage you to, to give your opinion to council, too, if we don't do this tonight, because I want you to be heard. You have reasons that are valid, but, you know, I don't know if the, if anybody on the board has any strong feelings.
How does, to clarify decorative as far as rod iron goes, because there are a number of those throughout the community. How does that, how does that?
I think it's both decorative and it also talks about light. I mean, we're not, we don't go in and regulate like, okay, you've got to use a rod iron at this diameter or things like that. It can't, you know, can't say it's rod iron and be a solid fence, you know, solid. So the current zoning code.
Basically, what it says is they have to be more than 30% open as far as like, you know, as a, as letting natural light in or, you know, have transparent openings. And then it specifically calls out not allowing chain link and barbed wire or wire, razor wire or chicken wire fencing, that kind of stuff.
It's focusing more on that versus the existing decorative that's in place in a number of areas right now.
Right, so decorative is, you know, it lists examples, but those examples are not defined. That's what they're supposed to be. They're kind of just self, you know, kind of common definition at that point.
Just so we understand, the committee didn't recommend any changes. This is, this is coming from staff, okay? That they're, they're suggesting that we, we don't allow front yard fences.
And the language comes from your existing code.
So that, right now, there's no, the committee, after discussing this, whatever, we didn't recommend any kind of changes. Gordon still is saying, as a staff comment, that he wouldn't permit it. So we're not, nothing is going to change. And just so people know, people will be able, they still do a split rail fence, not with chicken wire behind it, but with a wire to kind of, what is that, Bill? You can probably explain it better. There's a certain mech, wire that's allowed to, so that they can keep animals in, so. It's called what?
Welded wire.
Welded wire, okay.
It sounds like you guys already made an interpretive decision that would translate over to the new code.
One question with the fences, it might have to be defined more, would be your definitions. Is there anything defining offenses like along the whole lot line in enclosure? Because is, is decorative also considered a six-foot panel an opening, a six-foot panel an opening? Or is that, you know, something totally different?
You would have to look at the fence regulations and so you're saying like if it's in the rear yard or the front yard or?
No, front yard like, no, almost like a trellis or something like that, but you got a, a six-by-six panel. Then you have eight foot of open space. You got another six-by-six panel and you got maybe eight of these along the yard in the front yard.
I've seen some of those, like you're talking about, the language that I think has.
Tapped, that's why I was asking.
Yeah. Usually they don't, I see 15 foot in length. It's not really a fence. Put them up all across the front yard, right?
Right, but you're not, you wouldn't be six foot because six foot panel is not allowed in the front yard, right?
Well, is it, is it a panel, so you're allowed, it's art versus a fence? I mean, should there be more definition on something like that?
Current definition of a fence is an enclosure or barrier typically made of wood, masonry, stone, metal, or combination of those materials, the purpose of which is to physically and or visually contain certain uses or activities, prevent or control entrance, mark a boundary, or act as a screen. That's the definition.
There was an issue in the community where it was like a tall trellis that looked kind of like a fence, but it did not close, so.
And so at that point, that'd be an interpretation of the city or the zoning official, so.
Okay. Okay, so, so really, what, I mean, I don't know if anybody has any.
I personally don't like front yard fences, but I also think there are decorative ones that can be done nicely, I think. I mean, Fibonacci's farm is a great example of a decorative fence in the front that looks good. So I typically lean Gordon's way, but I am fine with keeping the decorative. That's what the committee recommends and the rest of Planning Commission agrees.
That's, that's kind of where I'm at, but.
Yeah, and there's, there's probably some properties that they can't put a fence in the back, but they got to have a fence to contain their animals. They don't have a choice. So I think as long as we limit it to the height and decorative, no chain link fence and that kind of stuff.
So, so essentially we're not, there was no modification, keep it as it is, is really what we're saying, yeah, okay, all right.
There's also the benefit that you guys wouldn't be creating a lot of non-conforming.
Non-conforming, that would be, yeah, right, right. All right, so, sorry, Gordon, but you got shot down there, buddy, but we keep trying, because you may get counsel, so it's good.
I was going to say, potentially a lot of non-conforming certificates for the city.
Yeah, right, right. Chickens, like I said, we've had this conversation. I don't see it as a problem. I do, I agree, man. First time I heard them, like 12, never have had an issue, never have had a complaint. I would recommend that we keep it as it is unless anybody on the committee has any other.
I'm good with the chickens.
Okay.
Yeah, I am too.
All right, so then we go to the zoning occupancy permit. And I kind of went through that again. I can go through it again, but I think I'm, I'm in favor of what was recommended there of deleting that last part of the number three and then those next A, B, C, and D. Is that, all right?
I agree with that, yep.
Great, and then I think, are we okay with the blanket, okay on Scott's legal articulate, great language? I don't want mumbo jumbo. Just so you can fall asleep before.
Tell me again how it runs with the land.
Okay, so we're good with that modification and then, and then I think, John, if you could just go over one time the Architecture Review Board. I mean, it was even brought up in the committee. Was it, was it part of the charter? It's not.
It's not.
It, so it's just, it's been mentioned, hasn't been used. I don't have a problem with kind of maintaining that integrity if we ever want to revive it, but just kind of knowing now it's not there.
I think we just put it under the Planning Commission as a subsection, that this is a committee of the Planning Commission that advises the Planning Commission on certain issues and keep the majority of the language the same and change references to the appropriate point and call it that. And I think just, you know.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
I think having it as a subsection, because there are actually people interested in that right now. Suddenly we do have people interested in serving on committees. And that might be a good way also, first of all, it's important to have, but I also think it could be helpful as kind of like a feeder system as people retire or step down from boards, having people, you know, at a committee that recommends a planning condition, it might be natural to move some people up at some point. So I, I think having it as a committee, a subcommittee of Planning Commission makes the most sense.
I would just request that minutes are taken in all of those committees and subcommittee minutes, because those are all required 99 out of 100 times, just to be on the safety.
Yeah, yeah, and those are things that could be.
So we have Melanie here tonight, Scott will cover it.
One question with that, when they paint buildings up in the business district, do they have to get permits to do that?
No, and that's, I just had a note right here, I was going to try to work it in. I'm glad you brought that up. And that's something, you know, for the CBD district, you may want to consider adding in there, you know, regulation of colors. I was telling Bill, I think Springdale has a Springfield Pike overlay that regulates strongly, regulates the colors. You actually have to have a permit to paint.
Right. Is, what's to stop people from painting the buildings yellow, purple, whatever? Would that Architecture Review Board control that?
Well, if we had the board, if we had the position, or, or I don't even know, to do what Bill's saying, I don't think that you, you could just have a palette of colors that's permitted. And that's what you do, you know. Problem you can run into on that, though, is not every place requires that, right? Somebody could get a building halfway painted, spend several thousand dollars, and come up and say, that color isn't permitted, you got to start over again. That, those are some of the trick bags you can run into. I'm not saying it's not a bad idea, I, you know, because we've seen proof, right? Sometimes you, you look at things and you're like, oh, my goodness, what were they thinking, right?
Right.
So, I, I mean, I see both sides of that.
And people think that the Business Association has the power to not let people paint their buildings. I'm like, I wish we had that kind of power.
Right.
We can start maybe with a comment asking if they have any plans on an occupancy permit and that, you know, we would like input on it if they do wish to do something like that.
I, I don't know how you do something like, John, do you have to like define, like have a, I've seen it in some homeowners associations where you basically have a list of colors. But I mean, that's, you know, you got to maintain that, you got to keep up with it, you've got paint colors changed, all that kind of stuff, you know.
Your, your city attorney is giving me the eyes and I, I did stay at a Holiday Inn once, so I know enough to be dangerous on this issue. And so, but I.
Scott, do you have comment? Go ahead. You might want to go up to the.
All I have to say is that it's notoriously difficult to regulate color. Typically, color can be regulated with design guidelines and historic guidelines, for example. If there are strong finding, strong findings that are in conformance with the, the, the historic content, texture and fabric of the community. I've seen a lot of, I did a, my senior thesis on somewhat the legal defensibility of form-based codes. And one of the cases, if it was not the state of Ohio, I think it was the state of North Carolina, had a color regulation that was ruled arbitrary and capricious. And that's really all I know about that. But I believe that your city attorney might be able to give a little bit more guidance on that.
Well, one of the, maybe I can just kind of, one of the recommendations is to look at historic district and maybe when we get to that point, I think. I mean, I think just trying to throw in this on, at this, this point is probably, I mean, we've got, we've covered so much. Think it's valid and I think there's, there's obvious examples of where this could come into play, but maybe, maybe this is something for another day.
And that's one of the things that I kind of said in my presentation is that historic district was one of the recommendations coming out of the Healthy Hilltops Plan. It's not part of this because in order to do a historic district, you have to do an inventory. You have to develop guidelines. You have to get on the hash register. You have to adopt a zoning overlay. That's where the zoning would come in on that, and that's where you would empower the Architecture Review Board to become your preservation commission at that point and use the guidelines to, to, to facilitate guidance for new development or rehabilitation of buildings in your historic districts.
So why don't we just save that for another day, maybe?
Okay.
All right, so, and we got it, we got to switch over here from, from Planning Commission to council. I told him I'd give him, try to give him at least 10 minutes. No pressure here, guys. We can, we can, we can come back. You guys can digest. I know there's a lot of information. Or we could, we could, you know, with the, with the modifications that are the, the amendments that we proposed tonight of the existing thing, we can make a motion for a recommendation with those amendments. It's, it's totally up to the board and I'll, I mean, I'll sit back. I know Don and.
Well, I guess, since there are some additions and changes, I would recommend that we have this draft updated to the, to the changes. Meet again and then have a final vote.
Okay, and Scott, can you, can you kind of let us know, you said we don't need to, we can, without notice, we can just say.
I think you can go ahead and continue this hearing in progress to a certain date. I would ask for like a motion to continue it for a future date that you guys can agree on now.
Could, could we do it? I'm assuming, and this is one big assumption, I think we can. I like the fact that we're, we're televising it, you know, for people that can't come here. We could just, we can make it the Monday, or the, excuse me, Tuesday, the first council meeting. The first Tuesday in May at 5:00 prior to the, to the council meeting.
I think May 4th.
May 4th?
Okay.
Is everybody available?
Do you want to make a motion to, to do that then? Okay.
Or Jamie, you go ahead, want to make a motion?
So I'd like to make a motion to continue this hearing in progress on, at 5:00 on Tuesday, May 4th.
I'm in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, so delayed till May 4th, yep.
Great.
Yep.
That, John, you can probably, we, you know, a week or less, probably get these, you probably got a lot of them already done, right?
Uh, yeah, I can make some. These are all very minor adjustments to the code I can, I can make.
So we'll, we'll get them. We'll reprint it for the committee. We'll, we'll update, we'll update on the website the, the, the new, you know, the proposal that's going to be voted on.
Okay.
At the May 5th meeting and hopefully it's a real quick meeting for us all.
Okay.
But maybe not, we'll find out.
Okay.
All right, so.
Have a motion to adjourn?
No move?
I'm in favor.